I have seven o'clock rise in time. This is the meeting of the common council of the city of Bluffton, June twenty-second, two thousand and twenty-one, so we'll be in, all members are here, so therefore, we have a forum at this time. I would ask you to rise and join our invitation. If there's one.
Awesome, Father. We just thank you so much for the honor to be here this evening. I thank you so much for allowing us to serve the community of Bluffton. I pray that you would grant us wisdom to make the best decisions for our community. In your name I pray. Amen.
(inaudible) to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Our minutes, yeah, from our last meeting have been posted. Are there any additions or corrections? During that, they will stand approved as posted. Our old business, we will carry over until our next business meeting on July sixth. Our new business, the first item of new business is Resolution Twenty, Twenty-One dash fifteen, which is the resolution for the acceptance of a P E R for our wastewater improvements that have been submitted to the S O R A. Are there any questions about this document? Not, I'll approve the motion to approve the Resolution Twenty, Twenty-One dash fifteen.
I'll move to approve Resolution Twenty, Twenty-One dash fifteen.
Second?
Second.
Josh. Any additional questions? If not, all those in favor of Resolution Twenty, Twenty-One dash fifteen, please raise your right hand. Those opposed, motions carried. The next item is Resolution Twenty, Twenty-One dash sixteen, is the transfer resolution to repair a roof on a station across the street. The thing of forty-three thousand, is that the end number we ended up with?
That's the part of it.
Part of it. Okay. Are there any questions about this resolution? Okay, would someone like to make a motion for?
Are all of these numbers involved in the same resolution?
No. Um, the first one is for the roof repair. The second one, since we didn't do I T for an individual, but we did it for a company, we moved it from an appropriation of salaries and I T services, which is a service number. And then the Wells County Council on Aging, we're moving from thirteen thousand to a Council on Aging, because we had that budgeted two different places that we have paid it to the computer phone upgrade that the Board of Works approved.
Thank you so much.
Second?
Second.
Second to that. Before the discussion, all those in favor of Resolution Twenty, Twenty-One dash sixteen, please raise your right hand. Those opposed, motions carried.
It just seemed a little cleaner this way.
Then we have the additional appropriation for the Washington Park renovation, and Tavion.
This was my mix-up. I advertised it for eighty-seven thousand, and then once we got into it, it turned out to be eighty-nine thousand, but I'd already advertised it, so I had to redo it for the other two thousand, rather than do the whole thing and delay the original one, since it included some other things. I just did the two thousand separately.
Have a motion to approve ordinance number fifteen thirty-nine?
So, Lou.
Second?
Second.
Second by Scott. Any additional comments, questions? If not, I suggest we take a voting, and so, those in favor, please raise your right hands. Those opposed, motions carried. The one thing we will need to do, since we are working with an ordinance, we will need to suspend the rules, and then we'll have a second vote to officially adopt the ordinance.
I'll make a motion to suspend the rules.
Second?
Second.
Second. All those in favor, please raise your right hand. Next, we'll do the second reading of ordinance number fifteen thirty-nine, to have a motion to approve the second reading.
I'll make a motion.
Second, Roger. And for the discussion, all those in favor, please raise your right hand. Those opposed, motions carried. Okay, at this point, Brett, are you going to read the waivers and what your response is to them, or?
Cam.
Okay.
We are not being reviewed by the council, so if you want to turn on our.
You turn that mic on, sir. Does the slider switch when we're on?
There you go.
Thank you. Just go straight into the variances?
Yes.
All right, the first one would be electric and streets. Street lighting can be reviewed by this electrical street department, so we're proposing that each lot when approved will have one electrical post installed three foot from a property line up. This fixture will shop with dusted dawn switch along, and homeowners shall keep the fixture equipped with a light bulb, and then street lights at the intersections only. This is in conversation with city officials, so it is my opinion, this is a mutually desired variance to align with proposed provision of a particular Bluffton standard, so. Want me to go through all of these at once, or do you wanna?
You know, why don't we do each one individually? Brett, not everybody has copies. We had a timing issue with them getting these on, so.
This is not in box?
No, this is not in box. And these are variances that were brought up at the A C committee that Josh is part of, and so.
Question, clarification. The, the individual lights would be installed at the time of home construction on that lot?
That is correct.
Any issues with that? Brett, if you could, could you, just for the record, state the, who you're representing?
Sorry?
That's okay.
Brett Miller, M L S Engineering, representing Jeff Shelvin and Flat Creek LLC.
Thank you. Second?
Going next, or do you want to make one of the votes on that?
I think we could do all, we do all on, right? Cam?
Cam.
I think so.
All right, we'll do, the second one's a short one, too. Be the water department, current specs, specs ductile iron, and we're proposing C nine hundred plastic. We continue to work with Dave Hendrix on this and the specs. One of the reasons of this is talking to contractors, that installing plastic, C nine hundred versus ductile iron is about half the price, so ease of construction costs is the main reason for the variance. We would continue to, upon approval, we would continue to work with department heads on the exact specifications of their approvals on our design, but.
John, over here.
Okay, so this is the longer one. This is really the general layout of the subdivision. Does everybody have a copy of that?
No.
At all? Do you mind if I hand out?
No.
A reduced, a small copy of my. Brad, is that the latest provision?
Yeah.
Mayor, Tim Simpson's on his way.
Okay.
All right, so, I'm trying to see how to organize this for you guys. I'll try to go by one by one on what ordinance says and then what we're proposing, I guess. I'll do my best, ask questions, I guess, as I go along. So, ordinance reads that we have to tie it to three existing roads we're proposing. Right now, there's only two existing, would be Dustman and Forester Drive. Depending on how we would develop this, there's a chance that the adjoining subdivision would be constructed, that would be our existing three, but right now, there's actually just two in place, so asking for that waiver.
Brett, we have stubs for three more roads, right?
Yes. So, we're proposing two stubs to the east, and that kind of matches the farm and adjoining property on the east, and one stub to the north, one to the west of Forester, and then one to west to the, which is proposed Parlor City subdivision. With these, the two stubs to the east, it's one of the next items is greater than a thousand feet of separation between these proposed. The reason it's greater than a thousand is because there's a kind of a low area in the middle of the property, it's not the best place to put a road, and with the, where the joining farm fields are, it just makes the most sense to make those useful in the future, so that was the reason for asking for a variance of a thousand feet. The next item is a maximum of a thousand feet length of a street without creating an This would be, be kind of along the west side between lots forty-three and like seventy-five on your drawing on the west, and sixty-five to one oh nine, it kind of just, kind of worked with the layout, kind of working lots from the north-south, and where we had a tie-in to these other roads, it just kind of, it didn't work out great with our layout to have, create additional intersections, so that's why it ended up being a little greater than a thousand feet.
How much, how much is, Brett, the, the distance?
I don't have it exact, I'm guessing about twelve hundred, about two hundred greater than ordinance. And then, another one was a minimum distance of two hundred feet between intersections of streets. This would be up there at lots seventy-three, seventy-four, and the eyebrow. The reason for this being less than two hundred is that stub street to the west is fixed based on the Parlor City layout, and working the lots, once again, from the north-south, just to allow enough room to have that intersection larger than that, or that distance, so that's the reason we're kind of, type, we're trying to keep those lots in the northwest corner, very large estate-type lots. The next item is maximal length of cul-de-sacs of three hundred and fifty feet. This would fall with the lots eighty-six to ninety on your drawing, the northwest corner, ninety-seven to one oh two. Once again, I don't have a great explanation of, it's just kind of the way it worked out, the layout that we prefer to have, that a little larger, I think we're about, we're not, we're probably about four twenty-five or four hundred, so we're about fifty-foot-ish longer than, for instance, three fifty.
Jim, do you have a copy of your?
I have. Do it.
Next item would be horizontal curve standard, except for my design. This would be at the, I call it eyebrow, half cul-de-sac at seventy-four, seventy-five. This isn't really a standard of, in the standards at this time, it would call for a large two-hundred-foot radius centerline. By doing that, it would kind of mess up our tie-in to the west of Parlor City, and we just like this lab, I guess, of more of the cul-de-sac type eyebrow.
Tim, did we have this at Greenfield Farms, as you say?
Yes, we did. It, it got eliminated.
Okay, what did, what did?
What'd they do? They actually made a loop around, made it all connect together, and they had to have two connecting out to Clark, two, two roads connecting and went to Clark. They did a way, they actually had proposed a cul-de-sac in, then they tried to, eyebrow, and actually eliminated it, went to, like I said, a, a loop that is connecting, and then two streets connect straight into T and to Clark. That's what they did out there at Greenfield Farms.
Was it loop with radiuses or inter, like stop intersections?
No, it was just a continual loop around, no stop intersections. The, on, at, at Greenfield Farms, what they did, their initial farming town was to go all the way around through and T into Clark, off of that, they wanted to come back to the north with a T intersection, they wanted it to be one, just one long cul-de-sac. And they actually redrew it to go and loop back around and put an eyebrow in, and they were going to try and put like an alley-type structure out to Clark, and then we finally got them to improve that, which they did. And they've got the loop, and instead of an alley, they have, there's two straight roads then that connect to Clark with, with that loop. There, there, Brett, there is a stop sign then, where the, where the loop tees into main farming town, it tees into, on both sides, and then a Clark. Those, those through streets do, do have stop signs out.
Which lots would that be at on here?
He's talking.
Oh, you're.
I'm talking about Greenfield, I'm just answering the mayor's question regarding.
You're describing.
They're buttoned up against existing.
Right. This would kind of affect on your drawing, I mean, it would change that whole, well, it would change a lot, actually, but what I'm talking about is the around seventy-four, seventy-five, seventy-six area. Being that we're fixed with the stub to Parlor City, really encips us on, it would really just, I'm not saying we can't do it, or, you know, if the board wants us to look at it, it would just drastically rechange that whole, I'd have to redo that whole northwest quarter of this whole subdivision, really. I just have one more item, and then we can have open discussion, I guess. The last one was cul-de-sacs, having three driveways onto them, and the variance request, I'm requesting up to five driveways on the cul-de-sac. Most of them, five was up reached, because most of them would be kind of on the, on the street, but I wanted to give some leading city, some flexibility, I guess, on the homeowner, that they can put their driveway maybe where they wanted to. Cul-de-sacs are obviously the city standard, sixty-foot radius, the back curving like we've had, we've been working a lot with the city on those, so these are large lots, so that we're not trying to cram a bunch into these cul-de-sacs. I believe I hit all of the items that were, I had spelled out.
Brett, would you go back and talk about the streets, because Tim's here.
Sure.
And then the stubs, if, if we connect, if the connection was made with the Parlor City Estates, that's going to be another.
That would be the third.
The third.
Yeah. It would just depend on, you know, what section that is of theirs, or the timing of things, so that one at least is, I guess, in progress, the other two are, the other three that we're showing are.
Guaranteed, yeah.
Yeah.
But they've shown, they, they're fine, they moved on, making a connection there, right? You guys already talked about that.
It's in their master plan.
Yeah.
Are you working with them also?
Yeah.
So, what's the likelihood these are gonna match up?
Unless they mess up, exactly. So.
You're a better judge of that.
They'll match pretty strong.
Okay, thanks. Is it also the one drive extends to two hundred?
It's going that direction. I mean, it's going that direction, I mean, there's a farm between there, but we have one stub to the north for that field.
But the design would be, it could be continued.
Yes.
Brett, would you mind just quickly reviewing Dave Hendrix Water, and Cam came in late, I apologize for that, that's on me, so if you could just briefly run through those again.
Sure. So, the water was, continuing to work with city departments, we're proposing the variance of the C nine hundred, working with you to make sure that we have the right spec that you agree to, that will be approved during the actual, or engineering design plans. That was really on the water. And Tim, on the streets, the ordinance said tied to three existing.
Correct.
Right now, there's Forester and Dustman, those are the only two physically possible to, and then we're stubbing one to Forest, or Parlor City, one to the north, and two to the east. Nothing's really changed on that. Distance between stubs to the east, greater than a thousand, there's a lot, kind of that low area, and then kind of, we're just, kind of making sure we're stubbing into the middle of the fields to the east, just to give them as much flexibility of it, if that would ever develop. Distance between intersections would be kind of on that west side, along Belbrook a little bit, it's just kind of, we just don't want another through street, I guess, so it's greater than a thousand.
True.
Not much of a reason, other than we're proposing a large park in the middle of this, we're trying to keep that as a nice open four-acre green space, and then, once again, on the east side, would be, once again, a pond in the low spot, the distance.
Tim, what's the rationale for the distance between intersections? You don't want a drag strip or something?
That's pretty much, basically, that's what it boils down to. A lot of times, if you see in neighborhoods, and this is just an F Y I for what it's worth, and they start getting that long, a lot of times, you'll see developers will start, they'll start putting on curves, sweeps, and they'll have nothing dramatic, but it does have a tendency to reduce that, that potential for speeding.
If I recall correctly, in talking to Doug, it had to do with the length of the city block?
Well, that's, city standards are all designed based around the old style, or the old part of town, city blocks, with basically three hundred and fifty feet. That's where those, those designs basically originated from.
Yeah, very, just, yeah, I mean, that was part of the, you know, obviously, it looks good in the subdivision, when you, right, roads are kind of curvy, that is part of the reason just for look, but it is also for, you know, possibly helps, and we'd also work with, you know, I foresee possibly a three-way stop on, like Forester extended, that would help with making sure we don't have a straight shot all the way through, so those are things that would kind of continue to be worked through that, to help. Cul-de-sacs greater than three hundred and fifty feet was another one.
Yep.
I think.
And again, that standard was based on the, of the length of a, of a block, but that is also flexible up to a thousand feet, nothing greater than a thousand.
Yeah.
But now you're looking at, where that number comes from is basically looking at a, a length of three city blocks, and then rounding out to a thousand, where that number came from.
The driveways onto a cul-de-sac, I think you might have been here for.
Yep, I'm, yeah, I'm good, yeah, I caught all that.
Okay.
Yeah.
And that was just location for driveways to leave gaps in between, is that what we're talking about?
Mm-hmm. I mean, we've had lengthy discussions on snow removal and having.
You're saying those frontage lots are big enough for something?
Yeah, these are.
They're not tighter.
Yeah, especially with, you know, the cul-de-sac size, and then just with the five. Like I said, most of them, I think, will probably have the three or four.
They don't have that dimension.
Yeah, but I'd want to.
I think the Belbrook folks are going to be appreciative that you've done what you can to connect with their lot sizes, not exact, but fairly close on some.
Yeah, and if you can see, donors have had conversations with, you see kind of a, I don't know, there's four rectangles behind forty-five to forty-nine, there's been some preliminary agreements for the, the purchase of part of this property to give us some extra wooded buffer, so yeah, we've had, I feel a good job communicating with them, make sure everybody's on board and upfront with what's proposed.
Lot more positive conversations last time around than with the other projects.
Yeah. But they're happy now.
They showed a lot of appreciation.
But we've, we, I.
Appreciate it.
Yeah. Apologies.
John, Derek, do you guys, everything that you want to bring up, the variance is.
The wastewater, on the wastewater side, it's kind of a work in.
Yeah.
In motion. We've been working together very well, trying to solve some problems and some issues, so I'm confident, I can do work through, but we're not really far enough along. We, we know the depth of our new structure, and, yeah, at this time, if we're ready to move on.
Yeah. Done. Were you okay on the fire side of?
Did we move the cul-de-sacs back to one twenty?
Yes.
Yeah, that was my big concern.
Anybody else got any comments, questions?
If I, if I may, just start a couple of things, I apologize, first of all, being late, I wasn't on the agenda, so.
That, that's on me.
That's all right. I just wanted to explain a couple of things, just so that everybody's aware. The reason why the requirement or the request with city standards of having the points of ingress and egress is based on the number of parcels in, in the, in the plan, the number that is in this plan puts it to three. I was a little confused on that, to be honest with you, because when you look at the plans, there are basically more than three. If the stubs come out, they can work in equal hours, and point of ingress and egress in the future, when future development happens, so they do meet that standard, as far, in my opinion, they do. I mean, existing where it's going to be, but if you look past that, they've already got those stubs in there, which can convert into a point of ingress and egress going forward. As far as the longevity on some of these, when it's going over a certain distance, if you look at the drawing, the layout that you have, part of the, part of the situation that they are faced with is the way the, the lots to the west butt up, the distance they have to go to get beyond that point, that does fall into that category, and he does, and I, and I personally think there is enough, enough room in there that we can have allowance for that, I don't think that's going to be that big of an issue as well. As far as the length of a cul-de-sac being over three hundred and fifty feet, I tried to explain that earlier, that was originally based on the size of a, a city. to explain that earlier, that was originally based on the size of a, a city lot, or a city block, I apologize. But, but we also, in the standards, allow up to a thousand feet, which is, you know, basically three, three city blocks, and they pretty well fall close, pretty close to that proximity. It's the point of, of whether there's breaks in the, in the road to reduce the speeding, the potential for speeding things of that nature, that's where those, those numbers come in, that's why that's all derived from, basically, a potential safety, safety standpoint. Like he says, we put stop points at those locations where all those intersections are at, that should take care of that situation. The driveways on the turnaround, the city standard does call for no more than three drives in a cul-de-sac. And the reason for that is stated in the city standards, that it's for snow removal, to give the street department a, a point of putting someplace to put snow. Now, keep this in mind, how often do we really need to plow snow? I mean, last winter, we plowed probably a solid three hard dimes, we had a lot of light snow, but probably a solid three hard dimes. So, we're talking three times in a year. With them going back to larger cul-de-sacs with the hundred and twenty-foot to meet fire, fire code, as long as they stay within, we also have, this is not brought up, we also in city specs, have a standard for the size of the driveway. And as long as they stay within that standard of, I believe it's twenty-four feet, and I think it can go up to thirty-two, if they put two driveways together, it can go as wide as thirty-two, but individual drives, if they go up twenty-four feet, I think, I would say no more than five, that's really pushing it, is five. But these cul-de-sacs, bear in mind, are much larger than some of the old ones you see in town. It is a much larger cul-de-sac, which does allow for more, more room for that potential. And if, you know, going forward, if it does become an issue, you can always take steps as a council to, you know, if you have to put up, you know, parking in a cul-de-sac or dirty snow, that's some of those things, those, those options you have, that's part of your toolbox, too.
Basketball goals and parked cars are not.
Those, basketball cars, cold, basketball goals by city code are not allowed on the city streets, but.
Start to change your brakes on a slowest driver.
What we need to do is have a motion to waive the city standards that's outlined with Brett's presentation.
Second?
Second. Any further discussion? If you hold them in favor, please raise your right hand. Those opposed, motions carried. Thank you, Brett. So, Brett, can you send me a light drawing copy?
Yes.
Thank you, Brett.
Thank you.
Yeah. Okay, at this time, I'd like to turn the meeting over to Councilman Hensler, who has some comments and.
First, I want to apologize for keeping you guys later than, than you want to be here tonight. I didn't want to be here, but I feel like I had to be here. And the agenda item is simply to correct the record, and that's what I set out to do I won't often talk about my fraternity days during council, but I am reminded of a certain event during my pledging process, where during a certain week, I was forced to carry a saltine cracker with me all week long. And the purpose of that was, I was not allowed to break the cracker, and the cracker symbolized trust and integrity. And the purpose of the cracker was, if that integrity got broken, that the cracker is very hard to put back together. It's very hard to repair. And certainly throughout my life, I've broken crackers, and I've paid some price, some deep prices, if there's times when I've broken my cracker. But it's also taught me the importance of protecting integrity in everything that I do. And I can accept the times where I break the cracker, but when there's times where I feel like my integrity's been broken through other means, I feel like I must defend it. So, this was an email that was sent early Saturday morning. I got it shortly after it was delivered. It went to a wide distribution. Some of these people, obviously, are here, some of these people, obviously, aren't. Some of these people, I don't know very well, and don't really know me very well as well. I'm sorry, this isn't working. This was a fairly long email, and most of it was fine. It talked about some of the things that were presented in a, a meeting on the sixteenth presentation that I did at the will of the majority of the council, where I went through over two hundred slides, and I tried to do it in a very time-efficient manner. I think I got it done in seventy-five minutes. But it was this particular paragraph that caused me some pause and confusion. And for Father's Day weekend, I spent a lot of time struggling with this paragraph. And it started with this simple opening line, "They're not reviewed in his June sixteenth presentation," slides one eighty-six to two twenty-three. Now, for the people who received this email, they didn't have the presentation, and they wouldn't also have had the link to the video that we posted on our website of the presentation. So, without those two pieces of information, you read this paragraph, and you've got no mechanism to know whether, in fact, it's true or not. And it's not. I didn't really know what to do at that point, and I sent, I sent an email to John and to the chair of the task force, and I shared with them my concern, and I'm sure it was a little spirited. I had hoped that that would have prompted a reply, it did not. And I said in my email that I was going to contact Tony and ask what was appropriate in terms of how I should reply. Tony did graciously get back with me with this email. And what's, what's difficult about this email, and one of the reasons I'm here tonight, is because the email suggests that the original email is a gray area, it's probably not a violation of the open public policy, but to reply all to it would be a violation. So, I was left with, how do I defend my integrity? I couldn't simply reply all and send it out to the same distribution. Otherwise, I would have been a violation of, of a statute or Indiana code. So, again, I was stuck with this opening line. Well, we streamed this meeting. Here it is, went a little bit over an hour and thirty minutes. And again, you can look at the, the video, you can look at the presentation, which all the members of council have, and I asked the chair whether I could send that presentation to the task force. He said I could, and I did. And you can line those two things up, it's fairly straightforward, and you can verify this opening statement. And those slides were reviewed. The timestamps to the video are here, one hour to one hour and fourteen minutes. Every slide was reviewed. I spent nearly fifteen minutes on those slides. The rest of this email talks about EMS service and how these slides appear to connect. My opinion of the EMS service, half the slides have no EMS conversation in it whatsoever. The email continued, taking the opening comment that I did not review those slides, and to suggest that the lack of me presenting those slides reveals something. Well, a quick Google search with the term reveal is previously unknown or secret information to make that known to others. This information was known to everybody. I spent almost fifteen minutes presenting it. Nothing was revealed, nothing was hidden. It continues to suggest that the premise that these slides were not presented reveals a bottom line, and that should such a recommendation be made by me, that it has many implications, and it goes on to list several of them. I read through this several times, and I had several people read through it, just to make sure I was interpreting it the same way. We all came to the same consensus, that these lists of bullet points are to provide the reader some additional context to the fact that I did not reveal this information, and I've got some predetermined bottom line, that it provides them additional information that they would need in order to understand the implications of my hiding information and my supposed bottom line. There's nothing new in these bullet points, in fact, all of them, almost all of them were reviewed and thus revealed. The first one was that a new fire EMS agreement would require a tax increase of twenty-eight point four or five cents. And since slide two eighteen, it was reviewed at one, one hour, one and eleven minutes. Although I would note that that twenty-eight point four or five cents has nothing to do with EMS service. It just has nothing to do with it. But it was reviewed. The statute that was referenced was also reviewed on slide one eighty-seven at the It's noted that EMS runs an, an annual deficit. That was reviewed, slide two oh three. Talks about the fact that the hospital was sold, foundations were formed, that they run an operational deficit, the deficit could outpace foundation earnings, that Wells County Council has been asked to provide funding. All of those facts were reviewed, slides two oh one, two oh six, two oh seven, two oh four. No new information here. Talks about the loss of runs, and again, I reviewed the cost per run data, and to amortize that over operational losses, you know, what, what those costs are, slide two twelve. Talks about the three locations for EMS service and how they're interdependent. I spent quite a bit of time talking about that in the presentation, slide one ninety-two reviews that, and again, you can go to timestamp, one hour and two minutes. And it's in the presentation, they were all reviewed. And then it refers to a bottom line. There is a lot of discussion about EMS in this presentation, because it's something that's on my mind. And that's not new to the members of council, to the chair and to the mayor. Sent emails in the past asking about EMS service, and at the request of the mayor, he suggested I contact Seth Wicker and arrange a meeting to talk to the principals of the EMS service. I did that, almost immediately after being requested. It's taken quite some time to get all the schedules together to have that meeting, and this council knows that that meeting is planned for tomorrow. Mayor also sent me an email quite some time ago, asking me what my intentions were out of that meeting, and I told the mayor I had no intentions, and I would and could not, and so that meeting occurred. I've had several opportunities to see Seth throughout this time period, and every time Seth and I talk, I continue to remind him that I have no agenda here, that I'm simply gathering data, which is what I did on the sixteen, I presented my data. This email, sent to a wide distribution, suggests that I have formulated a bottom line. I have no bottom line. I am not in a position of power to have a bottom line. I have one out of five votes. I have the same influence everyone else has here on this council. I have expressed appreciation for this task force, I have expressed appreciation for the chair on multiple occasions. He and I have had spirited conversations on several occasions, and I respect that. And I think it is our job to listen to one another, to hear each other's opinions, and let those opinions guide us to the best solutions for the city. That's why I tried to do in the sixteen, and I will continue to try to do that. I would never suggest to this city that somehow I hold the power to have a bottom line. I invited everybody in this distribution to this meeting tonight. A lot of them will not be here, obviously. So, they are left with this email. They are left with thinking, I failed and hid information, that I had an agenda that had to be revealed through the email, and that somehow I have pre-concluded what I think needs to be done with this instance. It's just not true. I had hoped not to be here today. I had hoped that this could have been dealt with, without having to come in front of this body. I even went to a third party and asked them to intervene to prevent this. It didn't happen, and that's okay. I'm willing to stand up here and express my concern. So, I apologize again for taking your time, but I couldn't reply all. So, in order to address this body, I had to come here. And now, I'm faced with having to reply to the rest of the people in the distribution. And I'm sad. And I'm sad because this email has gone out to a number of people who were here, who sat through that presentation. sat through that presentation, who got the email that accused me of not reviewing this information. I didn't get a text. I didn't get an email. I didn't get, "Hey Scott, this isn't true. What's going on?" Nobody spoke up for the truth. The newspaper got this email. The newspaper was here. The newspaper knew. They were here. So again, I apologize for taking your time. But my cracker matters to me. And I'll defend it. Thank you.
Could you put the slide, the text back on? Could you highlight or go to the one that highlights the first line? Thank you for giving me the opportunity to respond. Scott, I apologize. Your cracker's not broken. I want to review with you how I wrote it. I understand how you read it. I'll take the blame for not writing it better. I'd like to explain. As a young man, I was taught by my dad, who some I think might be watching tonight from up there, that when you offend someone and you learn of it, take responsibility for it and you go meet them face to face. I drove here from Pigeon Forge, Tennessee today for one reason, to look you in the eye and say, "I'm sorry, didn't mean it that way." I will assure you now that I will do my best to make certain that everyone who received that email receives a clarification. Had a mayor in Kokomo, Bob Sargent, when I was there as a superintendent in the midst of a bunch of indictments and so on, and got nailed a number of times because people didn't agree with information that they later learned was true. He said something once that I've never forgotten. "Roger, it's a pretty poor nose in politics that can't take a skin in." I got my nose skin tonight. I accept it. My intent in writing this was prompted by a number of things. I've had at least two councilmen indicate to me they feel rushed, they have not had time to review the information the Task Force gave them throughout the process. I concluded from that that maybe not everyone would look at the video that you sent. Maybe some review would be helpful and I did my best to review it accurately. I viewed myself as the Chair of the entire Task Force, meaning the city and the township representatives. I didn't view myself as a city councilman sitting on that Task Force. When I wrote this, here's how my brain wrote it. Though not reviewed in his June 16 presentation, pause, Slides 186 through 223 appear to reveal councilmen mentor's bottom line, "appear." Why did I say "appear"? Two members of the Task Force, including one here tonight, were under the distinct impression, as I spoke with them, that this was your, it was your proposal eventually to move to including EMS. Had discussions with other people with whom you've spoken. I didn't solicit it. But those discussions are what prompted me at one point to ask the Mayor to contact you to see if we could sit down and understand what you were proposing. So we met at your home. You hosted us. You went through the information. At that time, you had slides that indicated there were some 30,000 approximate, 30,000 hours of available time of EMS that might serve as a companion to the Fire Department and thus we could have six people on site. So I began to explore that, if the forces could work together to somehow accomplish that. I began to explore that and understood from Rick and I'll say his last name wrong, Pytenberg? The EMS Director. And he said, when I said, "Could this be a team thing?", he said, "No." He said, "Our people are shifting constantly. When there's a run," and I guess the Ossean Station, my understanding, does an awful lot of transport and when they're out of town, they, everybody else shifts and they compensate. At times, they get so busy, we have to ask Adams County or Huntington County for help. So when I wrote this, my point was that you didn't review what is your apparent bottom line. I took that from the discussions we had at your home when you went through, though you continually said, "This is data," and reached a conclusion. My comment was, "It appears to reveal." In no way did I think the way I wrote it said that you didn't review those slides. I thought it, my intent in writing it that way was that what wasn't revealed was your bottom line. Because after this much information, I felt the Task Force people would say, "Well, what does it mean?" I didn't say it was your bottom line. I said, "In my opinion, it appeared to reveal that." That was the intent of what I wrote. I take responsibility for wishing I'd written it better. But there never was an intent to doubt your integrity. Not since I've been on council, nor do I ever think there will be. So I feel very badly that that happened. I was appropriately cautioned, I think, by your wondering if this violated the open door law. So my thought was, did I call? I didn't know what to do because it seemed that it was headed that direction. I didn't wish to violate the open door law any more than you do. I have had comments from councilmen that indicated to me they certainly were not totally uninformed, not that you sat down and went through the slides with them the way you did the Mayor and I, because if you would have done that, it'd be violation and I know you're sensitive to that. But there was, there is a perception among more than myself that you had a great interest in combining those two forces, that is, the Fire Station people and EMS. I regard you with respect. Again, I apologize. That's about all I know to say. Thank you.
We do have some housekeeping need to do. And the first thing is, we need to have executive session next week to further discuss the Midland warehouse situation. And so if you want to, and Tony's going to come and talk about what we need to be aware of when we send emails and that kind of stuff. So if you'll get your calendars out, what, we also need to schedule a meeting to continue our Fire Station narrative.
We do it on the same day?
Do you want to do it Tuesday evening?
I'm okay Tuesday evening.
What's the, you're not speaking into the mic.
Oh, okay. Sorry, Roger. The purpose of the executive meeting is to work on the business project. And then Tony wants to talk to us about watching emails and keeping our notes, which I think is a good, you know, when we started last year ago in January, we had our meetings with the new Mayor's meeting and you with the council. I don't recall so much emphasis being put on email, but it's a growing thing, you know, what we can and cannot do as councilmembers in terms of emails.
That was before COVID.
That was before COVID. And that's changed the number of things. So those are the two items we will cover in the executive session. And I would, if, what I'd like to do, reduce some or keep the number of meetings in minimal if we can do it Tuesday night, start at 6:30. I don't think the Midland situation will take that long. I mean, we've got the basics.
Is that the 29th you're looking at?
Yes.
Next week?
Yes.
I'm trying to go late next week, so can we just watch the weather and plan all that? Take a rain day and...
So what you have to do, and before the next council meeting, correct, the Tuesday, that would be the 6th?
No, it's 23rd.
We're reducing budget then, aren't we?
On the 6th.
But I'm saying this next Tuesday.
Next Tuesday on a not a council.
Right, 29th.
It still has to, we have to advertise. And the other thing that we want to schedule, while you got your iPhones out, is to set another date for continuation of the Fire, Fire Station.
I'd be okay Tuesday night to tackle both. If that works for everyone else, I don't know.
It's up to you.
I'm good on Tuesday, everybody else?
Yeah, I'll give you as much time on Tuesday as we need to give ourselves.
Let's do the executive session at 6:30. And then we will, then at 7:30, we will begin our working session and we'll need to advertise, which we've got time to do. I will advertise for another working session of council to focus on the Fire Station issue.
I prefer to continue to meet on the Fire Station issue. I won't wait any longer for the weeks.
You prefer what?
The week end next week. Work on both.
No, we'll do it now.
You think we should meet a little earlier? It might take a while. That's a lot to go over.
Whatever the councilmembers want to do, just if you want to come start earlier, that's
Personally, I'll be here for Board of Work, so I mean, we usually get Board of Works done at no later than 4:30, so if you want to start real early and you can...
Rick, what are you doing next week? I'm trying to hike in office. I can do, I can do 4:30 or 5 o'clock, whatever, whatever it takes. Like 5 o'clock?
Let's do 5 o'clock.
I think we should start earlier. I think we have a few extra items I think we need to do.
5 o'clock at 6, we'll do the Fire Station meetings. Dave, you're our parliamentarian. We'll be okay?
Yes.
Okay, anything else to be brought before the council starts? I want to thank everyone that's been in this whole meeting. Time to pick up our business next week, so everybody have a good night. 8:04.